Mayor, I'm just gonna start it so everyone can filter into the meeting and then you can begin whenever you're ready.
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
For those who are attending remotely, the camera in the seat chambers is set up to show those who are attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has a right raise hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in your upper right-hand corner when we reach the point in the meeting where the public has an opportunity to address council. You can click the button to be given the opportunity to address council. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and liberty of all.
Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Scally?
Here.
Counselor Dilaba?
Here.
Counselor Fisher?
Here.
Counselor Kennedy?
Here.
Counselor Powers?
Here.
Counselor Riche?
Here.
Counselor Scamperley?
Here.
Quorum present.
We do not have any presentations tonight. We do have one public hearing tonight. It's regarding, it is regarding an ordinance amending Chapter 209, Section 209-48, Schedule 9, parking prohibited at all times of the Augsburg Municipal Code. It's going to be Bill 97, and I will open that public hearing now. If anyone attending in person would like to speak regarding the public hearing, please come down to the podium and you'll have five minutes. If anyone attending remotely, use the raise hand feature. And Kathy, is there anyone?
I do not see any hands raised.
I, and this public hearing, let's see. This brings us to personal appearance. At this time, anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down to the podium and you have five minutes. And, oh, I forgot all about that. This is Alex Hammond, and he's town supervisor of Waddington, and he is going to speak to us.
How you doing, Alex?
I'm doing good.
You still packed that coat?
You know I do. And I, could you take this off? Okay. Thank you very much for having me here tonight. I just wanted to thank the council and the mayor for their recent negotiation that they put forward, and as well, the city manager, for the sales tax negotiation with the county. At the last village board meeting of Waddington and the last town board meeting of Waddington, we both passed resolutions in favor of your proposal. We think it's a very good proposal. We think it's time for the towns and villages in the city to get their due share, and, you know, let's just keep pushing for it. I'll also just give you a little piece of information. We had two county legislators at our board meeting. At the town of Waddington, Rita Curran, our legislator in the 15th District, and Kevin Akers, who was also attending the meeting. And there was a little bit back and forth, but at the end of the day, we ended up passing the resolution in support. Something that was really off to me was apparently to those two counselors or to those two legislators, they do not see it as a negotiation. They said it three or four times that, you know, it's not a negotiation. We're gonna basically tell Augsburg what the county wants. And we don't see it that way. I don't think any of the other towns or villages see it that way. It's a negotiation, always has been, and we support your proposal. The only other thing I would say about that circumstance was something that I talked with you before the meeting, Mr. Mayor. You know, I asked our legislator, I said, "Listen, if this isn't about taking money away from the municipalities, why not pass a local law or even pass a resolution at the county level that no matter what happens in the negotiation between Augsburg and the city of Augsburg and the county, you won't take anything away from the other municipalities?" And they both refused to say that they would support something like that, which only means to me that, you know, maybe if there wasn't an agreement to come together with you guys, they might not take it away tomorrow from the towns and villages, might not even take it away two or three years from now, but there will be a time where they start taking away and picking away at the towns and villages. So, they're trying to divide and conquer. We're not gonna let them do that, and I'm glad that yourself and the city manager will be attending our town supervisors' meeting for the county tomorrow night. The only thing I'll say, and this is not as, you know, a town supervisor, this is as a observer from the outside, I have a background in labor relations from Cornell University, and I'll just say that I've seen the recent news, you know, and different things about that, about opening the contracts as far as the city of Augsburg goes, and I would say that's probably not a good idea. They were negotiated, they were voted upon by council, and I think we should support the men and women here in Augsburg who are our first responders, and, you know, there's a contract there, and I think a lot of people in unions would agree with that, and that's just my two cents on that. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone in attendance? Anyone remotely?
I do not see any hands raised.
No one, eh? Okay. And this brings us to correspondence. Do we have any correspondence?
Citizens of Augsburg, city council and mayor, good evening. Question, where, Mr. Mayor, are you and your quartet of immeasurable incompetency headed? There does not seem to be a clear path ahead except putting the city on the purpose of bankruptcy and making the city a less safe place to live, work, and raise a family. We keep hearing about this great plan that this quintet of corruption has, but it is only half a plan, or in this case, scheme. Your plan for the OPD is to reduce staffing at the station on Park Street by eliminating dispatchers and cutting back on patrols. One point made at a prior meeting was that of what happened in the holding cell needs to be utilized. Now what, Mr. Mayor? Instead of a manned dispatcher there to observe the individual in holding, I am guessing over time will have to be called in. So there it is, half scheme with no answer. You cannot govern by saying here is a plan without asking yourselves the follow-up question, what then? Call it what you want, I call it an exit strategy, but wherever you call it, you better have one, and the four of you clearly do not seem to have one. Moving on, let the citizens of Augsburg vote on changes to the city charter. Why are the feckless four of you scared to let this happen? Oh, that is right. The citizens spoke in November for the change by putting new individuals on the council, and therefore that it is. Well, Mr. Mayor, we have some news for you. Democracy did not end on November 5th last year. It was just manipulated by you and three other vindictive individuals with personal axes to grind. Democracy keeps going whether you agree with it or not. Mr. Mayor, you keep referencing of how democracy spoke loud and clear on that day, then proceed to use it as a pretense to change the charter without input from citizens by hiding behind falsehoods and lies. The vast majority of support that put this sorry excuse for responsible representatives has long since abandoned each of you, and all of you know it. Continuing, the four of you lied. What happened to doing a proper search for a city manager, excuse me, a competent city manager? All we heard was that there would be a search for the replacement of Ms. Purdy, and in the meantime, you appointed what is at best a low-level clerk who can't seem to hold down a job or produce a budget. The amount of money being spent is for no other reason except trying to hide the incompetency of the newly-appointed city manager. Mr. Fisher seems to think that spending money on a headhunter is not a reasonable excuse for spending money, but an inept decision to keep on an incompetent new manager at the great bargain of $2,000 more than the experienced deposed manager is acceptable. I hate to tell you, but it is okay to spend some money on a reasonable action than it is to waste money hand over fist on unnecessary consultants. A fair price process that may cost a little bit of money is powerful to the taxpayer. Before you keep on saying that you were hamstrung by the proceeding counsel on passing union contracts, then maybe you should listen to what the three incumbent council members are trying to tell you about the savings that were created with these contracts. The numbers do not lie. They depict a savvy and responsible course of action in creating savings for the city, but that is not in line with your low-level thinking. And oh, by the way, you are the quartet of immeasurable incompetency, seem to have done your best to squander the savings down the drain in the name of saving money. We are wise to your con game. Where did freedom of speech go? As I pointed out to your eminence, you were given every opportunity in the months leading up to your election to speak your opinion. The council let you speak and have your say, as heated as the exchange was. Now we have heard things, heard you say things like, "This is my meeting, your opinion is wrong, and you have asked enough questions." I could go on, but it gets redundant after a while. It is hypocrisy at its peak. Mr. Mayor, let me clue you in on something. Myself and others will continue to speak up at public meetings as much as we want to debunk your inept theories, dispute your false claims, and stand up for not just the citizens, but the counselors that were there before you, who were headed in the right direction before you and your cohorts scammed your way into office. We will continue to be heard. Keep this in mind, Mayor, and your band of incompetence. To quote Ella Wheeler Wilcox, "To sin by silence when we should protest makes cowards out of men," end quote. And we, the citizens of Augsburg, will not be cowards ever. This community will continue to stand firmly with counselors Nicole Kennedy, Michael Powers, and Dan Scamperley because they stand up strong as they continue to fight for us all. Respectfully submitted, James King. I have one more, Your Honor. In this difficult time, our family, friends, neighbors, and fellow Americans are suffering in so many ways. Our government at every level is beyond fiscally stressed trying to meet the demands created by the COVID-19 pandemic. Because of this stress, many critical functions of the government are threatened. I, along with other Americans, depend on the police, fire, first responders, and incredible healthcare workers to keep America safe. Now is not the time for partisan politics. The time is to thank all the heroes for making the vulnerable and ill the priority while putting their own safety and health at risk. It is also a time to help the cause to rebuild our nation. I am proposing the creation and implementation of a two-step bond system similar to the bonds used in World War II. The system would assist in relieving the financial burden of our government while replenishing the strategic stockpile and providing the essential workers with the equipment, staffing, and PPE that is required to care for the critically ill effectively and safely. The empire, state, and patriotic federal bonds would be created in $50, $100, and $250 values and managed by each respective government. The bonds would begin maturing after two years and can be held up to 20 years. Both the empire and patriotic bonds would be interest-bearing and established through legislation at both the federal and state level. The intention is to help supply critical supplies and equipment to assist in the fight against this deadly virus, as well as ensuring the critical functions of the government are maintained while easing the financial burden. I thank you for your time and ask that you reach out to our elected leaders and urge them to consider this proposal. I wanted to convey my thoughts on the bond proposal to you and how it could help the city of Augsburg. This proposal is primarily intended to help ensure that we are all fully prepared to handle the demands of the current pandemic, as well as what may follow. This proposal is also intended to help fiscally stress local governments such as Augsburg. The aim is to maintain all of the programs and services of government, such as fire, police, et cetera. This proposal, if enacted, would operate for a relatively short period of time. It is meant to be a bridge until both the economy and tax base recover. The federal government may provide some fiscal relief. I am not certain that it will be sufficient for a several-year recovery. I believe longer-term planning is needed. It is why I have offered this proposal. We need to have more complete discussions between local government bodies, such as city council and state and federal elected leaders. In conclusion, the primary purpose of this effort is to help ensure that all of our citizens, healthcare heroes, first responders, et cetera, have an adequate supply of PPE, et cetera. I hope this writing will help you look at possible alternative ways other than hurting those who continue to give so much to the city. In unity, many very good things can happen for this community. Thank you and stay safe. Respectfully, David Doty.
Next, we have our consent agenda. That the claim is enumerated in General Fund warrant number 17-2020 in the amount of $727,234.58 and Library Warrant number 17-2020 in the amount of $24,969.22 and Capital Fund Warrant number 17-2020 in the amount of $3,415,301.85 and Community Development Fund Warrant number 17-2020 in the amount of $2,020 and Community Renewal Fund Warrant number 17-2020 in the amount of zero dollars, zero dollars, as audited, be and same hereby ordered paid. I so move. Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
No.
Counselor Powers?
No.
Counselor Riche?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley?
No.
Approved.
This brings us to appointments.
Mayor, if I may. For the councilors to vote, no, if you could provide me, what is it you're looking for? I'm deeply concerned as your manager that you're voting no to pay our city's bills. If there is something the three of you need in level of detail that you're not getting, I'm presenting you the same format that you've gotten for years. If there's something you need to see in more detail, but voting no on our bills is sending a very strong message to the, to our creditors, debtors, et cetera, that you're not interested in paying our bills, and that concerns me. So if there's something that can be provided to you to make you feel comfortable voting to pay our bills, I really would prefer that we would get to the bottom of that.
So, just to be clear, I'm, myself, I'm a little upset by the, the way the city attorney situation is being handled here, and I want all information, not just to four people, but to seven people. And so that's sort of a protest vote on my, on my end, for all information, including the stuff that we asked for months ago, I think, before you're even here, Steve.
Right, so since I am here now, I need to know what it is you need. As far as the attorney's bills go, I have the packages ready for those that asked for them. I will tell you, there's, there won't be anything on there that will, that will surprise anybody. There's been, at least not since I've been here. I will say, obviously, you voted on to pay those bills, you know, for many months, but we certainly need to, to ensure that, you know, you have the information to, to vote to pay our bills, because I, drawing the four-to-three line on this is, is completely counterproductive, and I don't know what we're driving at.
Personally, going forward, I would like to see it broken down to what, what bills we're paying going forward, instead of just a paragraph. I'd like to see it more broken out by what is actually being paid. I think that we vote yes, but I don't know, I don't know where General Fund $727,000. I think that just a brief synopsis of what is being paid might be beneficial. And also, I'm voting no on the basis of, you know, I would like to see, I know Counselor Powers had asked for some information and numbers, and I haven't seen them yet, so as soon as I have those numbers, then I can look at them. I have no issue voting yes. I'm not voting no because I don't want to pay the city's bills, but I won't vote to pay the city's bills when I don't know what we're paying. So, that's where I'm at.
Just to reiterate your three-page letter to the public not too long ago, based off the simple fact that we're nearly bankrupt, or whatever the case may be, I have a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens of this city. And going forward, much like Counselor Kennedy said, I'd like to see all the data. I asked for all the data a month ago. I haven't received any of it yet, along with the council bills, the legal bills, all legal bills, any legal matter that we have going on, and this is no different than approving a contingency fund aspect going forward in any way, shape, or form. We have a budget session coming forward, and I want that information, and until I see that information, will I support a budget.
It's my understanding that there was a former counselor who felt that they should review the consent agenda as well, and she came to the meeting beforehand, and that information was available, it's available to every counselor because they're, they're actual warrants, I guess, and they're in the comptroller's office, so, you know, I, you know, why not just make them available at the comptroller's office prior to the meeting if someone's that concerned wants to come in and review them all?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Just having the access, I just think it...
Yeah, I can establish, I can establish a process. I, I just, this is long and lengthy how you all have seen this, so if you wanted to change, I just need to understand that. As far as the legal bills go, you know, I think we'll talk about that in the new business. My, my only concern there, obviously, is, we discussed on email, all of us, the attorney-client privilege, that we don't, we don't violate that, other than that, as far as the transparency for what we're doing. And again, I can get this set up, so prior to council meetings, we can do that, you can, you can write, I'll have a book, I mean, whatever, whatever format.
My concern is to, not a concern, but just something that I care about is, you know, the public has access on Friday to our council agenda. They get the same packet online that we get, and I just think that it would also be beneficial if the taxpayers know what we're paying with taxpayer dollars. So I guess we're seeing complaints of lack of transparency, and I'm saying if we could just say, "This is what it is, this is what it means," I think there's a lot of people wanting to be involved in our local politics right now, and being able to say, "What are our tax dollars paid for?" Well, they paid for, I think that could also be a good step in creating an understanding with more than just the seven of us that sit here, to bring the public and make sure that more people know what's going out, and I think that maybe helped bridge some gaps.
I, I agree. The only thing I'll just say to all of you, and we'll cover it again during the budget, is remember, there's, there's very little money in the budget that is discretionary money. As we, as we walk through and approve the budget, we, we walk it through, so I'm, it's not as if you give me a fund and say, "Here, go do the best you can with it."
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying, I think if, with there being a lack of funds, if people can see what exactly we're dealing with, I'm hoping to bring transparency to another level, so that way we can all just be as close to, at least in the same book. I know we're never gonna be on the same page, but if we could get in, like, maybe even the same chapter eventually, it would be really beneficial. Not trying to be silly, but you know what I mean? I just think that more is better.
Understood.
I sure wish that, this had been spoken up of what you want, rather than act so childish as not, well, pay bills, and I wish this transparency had came years before.
I actually spoke last Wednesday with Mr. Jelly on the phone about these concerns, so this isn't the first time you've heard it from me.
Transparency had came years before, maybe we wouldn't be in this financial situation.
I think we had quite a discussion about the lawyer situation the night the lawyer sat right here, and we've expressed our concerns, and I think I've been voting no on, on the consent agenda ever since, including that night.
Just the last, just the last recess. Okay, so, I make a motion to appoint James Morrison to complete the unexpired term of Kathy Wade on the Augsburg Land Bank Board of Directors. Term to begin October 26, 2020, and then December 31, 2020. I so move.
I'll second that.
Two seconds. Any discussion?
He's a good man. He could be good on that board.
Yeah, I think the land bank is a very important, you know, avenue for the city, and getting, you know, quality people who are invested in our community is very beneficial to that, and, you know, in a time when people are spread thin, getting someone to step up to, you know, volunteer to do things like that, it's admirable.
Kathy, would you call the roll?
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Riche?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Approved.
And that brings us to items for council action. Our first item of business will be read by Police Chief Rob Lescott.
Sin Ordinance amending Chapter 209, Section 209-48, Schedule 11, parking prohibited at all times of the Augsburg Municipal Code.
I'll move that. Second.
Discussion?
No.
Does it just make sense?
The chief gave a pretty thorough...
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Riche?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Director of Planning and Development, Angie Smith.
This is a resolution to approve the sale of 947 Ford Street for $1,750 to Mark and Margaret De Mars.
I'll move that.
Second. Any discussion? Want to sell that land? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Riche?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Director of Public Works, Shane Brown.
Resolution declaring surplus property and authorizing the city manager to hold a public auction.
I'll move that.
Second.
Yeah, just so the public's aware, it looks like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, 13. 13 vehicles, some bicycles, some barbecue grills, utility trailer. I think it would be a good practice, like, I guess we advertise this as...
We, we will, now that you've approved it, we will do a big advertisement and set a date and...
Okay, so, like, a lot of people don't read, like, the legal ads or anything? Would it make sense to do, like, a small display ad in North Country now that has pretty good circulation?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna do everything we can do to get the word out there. Shane wants a big event on Saturday at his place.
Would, does the public have an opportunity to view the vehicle at all? Just, I mean, I, obviously, I...
We're gonna set up a date for, for viewing, yes.
Kathy, would you call the roll?
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Riche?
Yes.
Approved.
All right, that's item of business will be read by Police Chief Rob Westcott.
All right, this is a resolution declaring surplus property and authorizing the transfer to the St. Lawrence County District Attorney's Office, a surplus vehicle.
So, this is, this is something the district attorney's office was interested in, so we're accommodating them.
Correct.
It's, it's surplus to us.
Correct.
Shared services.
What's that?
Shared services. They, they do a lot for us.
They, they've helped us acquire vehicles in the past.
They helped us acquire a UC vehicle several years ago, brand new. They've supplied tactical equipment to our drug task force members, holsters for our officers, stuff that we couldn't afford to purchase at the time.
Wonderful.
So, goodwill gesture back to them.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good. Kathy, would you call the roll?
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Councillor Dillabaugh?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Rees?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by City Manager, Stephen Jelly.
Resolution authorizing a contract for audit services for twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-two. Your senior packet, uh, we received, uh, three bids. Uh, for the purposes of efficiency and past practice, um, Pince and Messinski, who we've used for a number of years, are not the lowest bidder, uh, but in my judgment are the, are the best bidder, most efficient, they're local, understand our processes, and they've, they've done a real good job for us this year. We will have our closeout for twenty-nineteen within the next week. They'll have the, our AUD finished and, uh, and our audit done as well. So, my recommendation is we go with, uh, with Pinsky and Messinski.
Thank you.
I'll introduce this item. Do you have a second?
I will.
Any discussion?
I've sat on the audit committee the last two years and, um, they've been great to work with through the two different audits and explanations that I've been through. Um, they've taken the time to really explain it, so that way, you know, someone like myself who didn't have much experience coming in was able to take the facts and figures and really look at it. So, um, I think that, you know, last two years I worked with them, I think going forward with them is a good move for us.
Kathy, would you call the roll?
Councillor Dillabaugh?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Rees?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by City Manager, Stephen Jelly.
Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number six for the contract for the wastewater treatment plant capital improvement project with Jet Industries.
I'll move that.
Second.
I'm not trying to be disrespectful to anybody. Uh, the chief, I know, and everybody else, just moving along.
So, just for the, uh, public's information on the resolution, um, this is a change order in the amount of twenty-one thousand, five eighty-eight. I think it's the fourth or fifth one?
Six.
This is number six.
Okay. And, um, it's for removing asbestos on some gaskets in the boilers at the wastewater treatment project, which now totals forty-three million, two hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and sixty-four.
I think that's good that you get that out there for people to know, you know, we spend a lot of money and you run into these things. It's good to keep that in mind.
For council's information, our contingency fund, we're, um, excuse me, we're a little above, uh, two point two million dollars in the contingency for the project, so we're running, running well ahead of schedule there.
Uh, any other discussion? Kathy, would you call the roll?
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Rees?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Councillor Dillabaugh?
Yes.
Approved.
And this brings us to old business. Does, does anyone have any old business to discuss?
I do. Uh, first of all, I just want to ask a question. Uh, clarifying that two point two million, uh, that is, uh, that is where we're at after this? Or is that what we, we started out with more than that, correct, for a contingency budget?
Yeah, I think you were a little more than three million for contingency. Maybe, maybe, maybe not quite three million.
Okay, I just want to clarify where we're at.
And our, our hope will be, councillor, that we can, um, we can use some or all of that money if it stays there to be able to fund those, a portion of those additional segments that we need the five point one million to do.
Good. Good, thank you. Uh, other old business I have, uh, probably, I'm thinking four or five years ago, uh, council and the last city manager, they began talks with, uh, Kuanis and the other owners at the, uh, former Augsburg property to try and get control so we can get the property cleaned up and on the tax rolls. Hopefully, uh, I just, you know, I know there's a community plan for that property. Andrew did a great job years ago putting that together. Can we get an update on where we're at in that?
Yes, sir. Um, so, uh, we met with Kuanis last week.
Oh, good.
Yep, we did. Uh, all the, uh, Mr. Mitchell and, um, and three of the other officers, the former city, city manager. Anyway, the basketball coach, I can remember him all by-
Mr. Murray.
Mr. Murray, yeah, so, uh, Mr. Pinkerton. Anyway, um, so they've not paid the, the taxes, uh, which is largely what we have told them is, is in the best interest, just let it go. Um, so, currently now the, the option to, to take the lean is ours. We're not going to take possession at the moment, only for the simple reason of just not putting ourselves in the chain of title so that, um, we become at least envision a deep-pocketed organization to, uh, uh, to an enforcement agency, the DEC or the EPA. Um, but we are working to schedule a meeting with them, working with the county, uh, to, to figure out how to go forward in a, in a partnership way. Uh, what we're basically going to say to the regulatory agencies is, we'll, we'll take it. We want to lead the project, we want to get it right. Um, but we don't want to be as in the gun sights of a consent order, having to, uh, use Augsburg City taxpayer money entirely to, to clean that up. Um, I've not communicated with the owners of the parcels on both sides of it. Uh, largely told them, you know, kind of, uh, well, just in a straightforward way, we're, we are going to move soon on the Kuanis property, which will bring the regulators in and there won't be, um, you know, there won't be any way to partition between the properties, if you will. When the regulators come, they'll be looking at, at the entire parcel. Uh, and/or the city will be asking them to look at the entire parcel. It is, it is just time now for us to move forward and get this cleaned up. Uh, so, you know, what, what that largely means is if we move forward with plans to clean up our parcel, they will most likely be directed to clean up theirs as well. Um, or, or potentially forfeit. Again, we can't, we can't force them on them at this point. But, uh, the parcel to the, uh, east, the far east parcel, um, closest to the boat ramp, uh, that has just recently changed hands. Um, by and large, the ownership is going to the same party that owns the parcel to the west. So, the, the number of people is much smaller now in which we've got to work with, so. So, we've started those discussions. Um, I think I may have told you last, um, meeting. Right now, though, I'm just, the priority is out there on that shade roller property. Now, that's really where I'm asking the county to work with us, the DEC, the EPA, and everybody else we can bring to bear to, to get going on that, so it doesn't jeopardize our development on Diamond National and it doesn't jeopardize what the, uh, what the Richardsons are, are ultimately planning on their parcel. So, that's where our focus is at the moment. Um, but I hope as we create the group to work on that parcel, we're just gonna carry it down the street to their parcels.
Very good.
It's some very good work by you, Steve, and the rest of the city staff. I want to thank you, but, because things seem to be really proceeding fast now.
I appreciate it, Mayor. And we'll say in fairness, Andrew Smith is the engine behind most of this and none of this happens overnight. Uh, and anything that appears like I'm moving the needle quickly to the right or to the left is, um, is, is just an image of that. The truth is, these are, these are projects that just take a long time to work through. And I think we are at that point now where, where we do have to get aggressive and stay aggressive and build these partner, partnerships to do that. And I hope, uh, I hope the county will share with us, uh, the success they've had cleaning up other sites around the county and, um, and we'll be able to move forward. Our, our shade roller property is a little more, uh, complicated than a site that's largely contaminated with petroleum products because it potentially has PCBs there, which just makes it, that effort that much more difficult. But, uh, we've, we've, we've got to get this done. There's no two ways about it. Our economic growth depends upon this and our, and our revitalization of the waterfront, uh, depends on it. We, we're, we, we can't move forward without this, so. The Kuanis, uh, I just would like to reiterate, I spoke with them, this is no, uh, no ill will towards them. We certainly recognize that, you know, a nonprofit group took a piece of property within the hopes of, of making it something better for the community and it just ended up being a, you know, a bridge really too far. And, and not the least of the handicap for them was, quite frankly, the two parcels to the east and, to the west and the east of them, um, would have, would have had to have something done. You, you're not just going to take a parcel that's, you know, all one parcel at one point and largely all container. You're not going to get to just say, okay, I'm going to work on my piece and, and forget what's going on to the right and left. The, the regulators are never going to allow that to occur, so. So, again, I just, my hat's off to the Kuanis. I think they had a great vision. And, uh, you know, a great concept is just, uh, very, very difficult. It would be very difficult for a local, county, state, and federal government partnership to get this cleaned up, much less a small organization like the Kuanis Club. So, I, again, I want to make sure this is not a, this is not a, an hostile takeover of their property ill will. This is, this is largely us, you know, saying, hey, we've, we, we want to jump in and, and help.
Thank you, Steve.
Uh, so my next one is, uh, about the cheese plant. I know, uh, I look back at some records in January, uh, that, the cheese plant was ninety-one thousand dollars delinquent in city and county taxes, and then forty thousand dollars delinquent in school taxes. Has the city made the county and the school whole, do you know, over the, and you may not be able to answer that question tonight, but-
Largely, I can tell you the answer is yes to the school. We always make them whole. The county largely holds us accountable to pay to them what we collect. So, had we collected any of that, uh, that, that money, we'd have to do it, so. Um, as of tomorrow morning, I, I'll just go ahead and cover it now, which you brought up. As of tomorrow morning, the Environmental Protection Agency Emergency Response Cleanup Unit will be on site at the cheese plant. Uh, we, they are going to, uh, make entry to remove any hazardous chemicals, hazardous substances, things that were left by, uh, by the, by the previous contractor. When we, um, we got in there a month ago, um, immediately code enforcement, you know, identified things that shouldn't have been left there for a great length of time, so. Uh, Andrea, working through the, the EPA channels has, has largely gotten us, uh, this, this group to come on site. Uh, so tomorrow, um, we'll, we'll make sort of an announcement so people know, because there's going to be EPA vehicles and cleanup vehicles around. But that's largely what we're doing tomorrow is getting the hazardous substances, hazardous chemicals cleaned out of there. Part two of that will be our piece, which will be going in cleaning out, um, you know, just garbage, junk, refuse. There's a lot of plastic cardboard boxes and the like. Uh, then part three will be assessing where we go next as far as, is there metal that we can get for scrap value, uh, things of that nature. But ultimately, what I, I believe is part of the, one of the proposals in the budget, if not something for potentially end of the year, will be, once we get it cleaned out, um, an assessment of just where the building is. You know, does it have asbestos in it? Does it have anything else that's of hazard? Uh, as we ultimately prepare, uh, to, you know, to apply for, um, assistance and support to get it torn down. Um, I don't want to get ahead of Ford Street right now. I think we all agree that's our number one priority. The building's in jeopardy of coming down. It's in a pretty bad spot. It's jeopardizing some other properties. So, I really want to try to get that one, uh, sent, sent home. But we certainly are starting the process now to remove the safety issues to the communities, to somebody get in there. You know, could they have started a fire or something? It just could have been a real mess for us on a facility that largely has been abandoned, so. So, that's where we are with the cheese plant. Um, we did get the check, uh, from, uh, from Andy Silver's office, one hundred and twenty-five thousand. They, they gave that up, uh, so largely now we, um, we have a, a judgment for about a hundred and ninety thousand left. Um, I've asked the attorneys for an assessment and for a run-up. Um, I really don't want to spend three dollars to get one. Uh, so my, my recommendation, I believe, ultimately will come to council, that we just, uh, leave our judgment passive, just leave it on the books. And if they try to sell anything, we are able to get it. But trying to, to chase around for any more of this money, I mean, we, you'll see when you review the legal invoices, we probably spent a hundred and twenty-eight or thirty thousand dollars to recoup a hundred and twenty-five. At some point, we're just, we're kind of energizing a, a legal system with money, but we're not gaining anything for ourselves, so.
Okay. Uh, and my last question is about the fishing derby. Uh, I know I've been pushing it and pushing it, and I heard that they, they walked away from Augsburg for lack of commitment.
So, we, we're having discussion with three, three groups. Major League Fishing was one of them. Uh, they were looking for a, a really early on commitment of fifty to sixty thousand dollars. Um, it was nothing that was budgeted for, uh, this year, uh, to spend. And, um, I, I tried to put the conversation off with them as long as I could to get us at least through the budget cycle before I came and asked council to spend that, that kind of money for, I, I couldn't at the moment be able to articulate the, the return. I'm not arguing that it's a, a good event, it's a good venue, but even trying to figure out now, for instance, how do we say, um, you know, what will the immediate return be? And I'm, I, I want to talk about this in the budget because I think this is one of those areas where we have to, we have to be prepared to spend some money. If we're going to grow, if we're going to increase the, the awareness, if we're going to increase the visibility of Augsburg, we're going to have to be prepared to spend money to do some of those things. But I think it's, it's also going to be, you know, a tough sell in a year when we're talking about, uh, you know, cutting other critical services in the budget that we're going to, you know, put up fifty thousand. So, I, I mean, I, I felt like it'd be a proper debate during the budget, but, um, not, not now, so. I, I did see also that they've, they've moved, the Major League Fishing went to Messina.
So, I thought that because the fifty grand was in last year's budget, it just rolled over?
Uh, I, I didn't see it that way, councillor, but I, I-
I don't believe so.
I mean, I'm, nothing rolls over to another budget without you all approving it. It goes to the, it doesn't go away. I mean, it goes in theory to the fund balance, but it, it, it needs to be re-appropriated to, to align. And I didn't see where that, where I could substantiate that, or you all had passed a resolution at any point to, to do that.
On the cheese plant, uh, John Rees, uh, searched out, found a, uh, a company that makes Greek yogurt and was showing some interest, and that's when the city went down to inspect the, the cheese plant and found, uh, you know, the condition and, uh, the hazardous waste. And so, uh, while it was, um, very disappointing that, uh, things of, uh, the building and everything has deteriorated to that, uh, by, you know, one positive thing, we are hitting this, uh, some cleanup started on it. I'm glad for that. Anyone else?
No, I, I would just say in the fishing derby, um, you know, maybe the Chamber of Commerce could coordinate, um, you know, some fundraising for these types of events, uh. You know, even if we had a policy where, you know, if you can raise half of it, we put the other half up, um, you know, something like that. Or, or some organ, maybe a, maybe a fishing organization, maybe a group that's, uh, you know, involved in that. Um, I know when they, when they started these things, there was a lot of local fundraising going on, so.
Uh, and I thank you, councillor, for jogging my memory. Councillor Scamperley, that was probably the last thing for me was initially up. So, in meeting with the chamber, you know, they haven't done a, all their fundraising events. Their first one started about a week before COVID hit, so they've done, they've done no fundraising. They, they largely have no, no money. Uh, the chamber person's been largely volunteering, you know, one day a week to work there. She's not, not being paid. So, um, I, I had talked with, um, with the county chamber a couple of months ago about this and, and there was hope, uh, that, that perhaps, you know, they could either help us fundraise or they could put a part of it. But because their fundraising efforts because of COVID, um, have, have, have largely ground to a halt, there just wasn't any, any money there, so. Again, I think, I, I, again, I'm certainly in favor, no, no question. I just think it's a matter of us during the budget talks appropriating and discussing what our, um, you know, what our, what our desire needs to be going, going forward. It, they do need commitments in the fall. This is kind of when they do it, late summer, fall for the next year. So, it's, it's kind of as councillor Camp, Scamperley said, we almost have to, to do it. But then there's a commitment, you know, to, to pay the fee or to commit to it when the year that it rolls through, and so. Anyway, uh, there's definitely pros and cons, and I think this, this is an area that certainly people could, you know, there'll be another, another opinion set on this as well, um, as, as far as the, you know, what's, what's the cost benefit to, to doing this? You've really got a, it isn't just a fishing derby. You've got to be prepared to host some kind of a festival or host, you know, other events that bring people here, you know, et cetera. So, I just, and I, I, God forbid, if this COVID is still going on this time next year and we can't do any of those things. You'll always have a fishing tournament that is, is online. They, they carry their own judge, they carry their own cameraman. Now, it's not like where they're running back and forth and people are waiting to see fish come in and get, and get weighed. It's, it's, it's just a bit of a different operation, so I, not, not an easy one.
Um, I sat on the committee and did a lot of it. Um, one of the, I know we would all like to fundraise a hundred percent of that, but without a commitment, it is very hard. You can't fundraise for something you don't have a commitment for. So, it's one of those things where the city is going to have to put up some type of funds in order to secure it so that secondary committees can come in and we can fundraise for it. But we can't start fundraising when we don't know if we're going to have it. So, I think that just needs to be made clear to, to everyone that without a commitment, you can't raise money for something. So, we're going to put ourselves in a vicious cycle of- So we're going to put ourselves in a vicious cycle of, we want to promote Augsburg, but we can't promote Augsburg without a commitment. So we at some point have to decide whether we're going to not promote Augsburg and just take our, you know, I think, I believe the contract we had to put half down and that half was due a week before the tournament. So we just have to look at it longevity. If the city puts up the twenty-five grand, if a committee can raise money, that money can go back into the city's budget and we can continue to raise for the second half of it because it's not due till, I, I believe it was a week before the tournament starts. So just in tunes of thinking, if we get another offer, um, we really need to look at generating revenue, generating the sales tax that that would, uh, that would bring in, look at our local businesses. Um, it's, it's really, I know that you say you can't put a number on it, but it's, it wouldn't hurt.
No, and, and good news is we'll, we'll be talking about this in a week and, and how do we fund that line? And again, I'm, I don't mean to think I'm not completely pro this. I just, um, I, I do think we just have to weigh all the, the pros and cons. And one of the significant cons for me was the notion that we couldn't do any, if, if the other things got shut down and we couldn't do them, you know, and then having to be able to substantiate to people what, you know, what they could expect the gain to be from, from our investments. So.
And I understand.
Just, just, it's a conversation for all of us to have, I think, is, is all that. That's, I mean, I think it's certainly worthwhile. I think the chamber wished they could have been more aggressive and, and pushing it and, and doing it, the local chamber and the county chamber. I don't think there was any unwillingness here. It's just the, the timing right now and some of the stuff is just, just not good.
No, I understand. I just wanted to bring out that you can't fundraise until we have a commitment. So that just, because if we could fundraise for something, I, we would have started months ago. But without something to fundraise for, you have to be able to show where the funds are going. So.
And this brings us to new business. Does anyone have any new business to bring up?
I do actually. Um, I spoke with, um, um, Rhonda Raphael about the Light Up the Night Parade and she is inquiring. Um, so she's reached out to the mayor and she hasn't heard back yet about, um, the parade, if the city is going to, you know, work to approve something like that. She's looking at November twenty-first. Um, they usually go down State Street. The city usually, the DPW, um, provides, um, roadblocks and the police. Um, she's just wondering if that's something that, you know, can still go on. Obviously this year there'll be no meeting with Santa at the Dubisky Center due to COVID restrictions and things like that. But, um, I fully support something for youth and children and that brings, you know, there's plenty of room for social distancing along the side of the roads. You know, people can space out in their family groups. Um, I think that, um, you know, Augsburg needs something positive right now. And, um, I would like to push forward if I can give any information to Rhonda or if, um, some, maybe you could reach out to her.
Yeah, yeah. And if she, I'll, I'll try to get to her tomorrow. But I, I mean, yeah, a hundred percent we'll support whatever, whatever they want to do.
Okay.
I, I don't see any restrictions with it. And, uh, part of the, part of the guidance I was reading the other day promotes those, those kind of things. So, uh, I think we can do that. We've also, Kathy and I and Shane were discussing the skate with Santa, how we can, you know, be able to do that this year and keep that going.
See some things for youth, you know, we're, it's a, um, all communities are struggling right now. Um, the kids aren't in school as much as they would love to be. Um, I just think something positive, something to look forward to. It's a great start to the season. So.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
It's hard to say what can happen and what can't with the COVID right now. So.
Yeah, and, and we're the prime mayor. We're, I mean, truly, we just, we just do the best we can to plan these things. And you, you can't control if something gets canceled a week out. But we're, we're at the, that point now, planning these kind of things. So we just, uh, like, you know, the guidance is we can, we can proceed with things now and, and we'll just keep, keep doing the best we can.
Yeah, moving forward.
I, I stay in touch with, uh, with the school superintendent, um, you know, on, on these, because they tend to be the best information is there. He's got a impulse on what's going on and what the state may or may not be putting on. And we've kind of used them as the sounding board and kind of the right and left guidance for sporting events, uh, things we did with the Pop Warner, for instance. And so I, I, I think, um, it's just day by day. And, and there is an, there's an expectation that, you know, at some point in time, there will be, you know, greater restrictions coming back. It's, that's, that seems to be the general trend of, so. But I don't think, we don't stop planning for these things. We just have to keep, keep doing it.
I guess that was my, one of my focuses, you know, we need to continue to move forward and look, and look forward. And then, you know, if something happens in our community where it's not possible, then, you know, we can look at a rain date.
That's right.
Per se, but I mean.
We're planning to, um, we're planning to, uh, to start, um, public skating, you know, opportunity hours in November at the Lockwood. We've already got a lot of, um, events and, uh, you know, sports groups and people using it. So I think, and the school's ice is not ready yet. And he hasn't made a call yet on that. I think they're waiting another week or so to, to make the call and do in the ice. So, uh, yeah, I think we're trying to support everything we, everything we can.
Uh, we can open, um, the, um, Lockwood up to birthday parties as well. Is that something we can, we can do if we offer? I know it, there is nowhere to have birthday parties. And even if we can put a limit on how many, if we could, as a council, maybe put a limit based on whatever the social distancing guidelines are at that time, you know, if it, minute, if it's, you know, they can only have, I mean, minor hockey has thirty kids out. I mean, if they, we have to put a max on how many kids or, uh, you know, people can be in the, in the Lockwood. I think I'd rather see us have to put a max occupancy on it for a party and, you know, let the people that, you know, are working the party know that, you know, hey, we can't have more people than this and be very upfront about it. Cause, um, there isn't a lot, a lot available right now. And something like that might be the only opportunity for some kids to have some birthday parties that isn't any type of affordable place in our community.
It, it, it might be. And I'd say, um, I want to, I want to get comfortable. We're, in my opinion, right now, we're, we've gone beyond crawl to walking at the ice arena with getting it open, getting the sports groups in there, being able to, um, handle the, the much more stringent cleaning requirements before and after. So I'd like to get through that. I'd like to get the, the public stuff done. And we've, we've, we did talk about, uh, birthday parties or small gatherings like that. Uh, it's not necessarily a problem. It's, everything is just more labor intensive this year by way of supervision, ensuring that we are enforcing those rules. So largely we've been open with the groups, uh, who have their own supervision. They sign the rules. They have their insurance. You know, they know what they're getting into. The public skating, we've had, we've had quite a few people, uh, inquire about that. So again, we felt like that's something that the, the staff can, can manage that. Their occupancy will be limited. We've been talking to the Watertown and Messina, uh, recreation groups as far as what they're doing. So trying to keep things consistent. Um, but I'll, I'd like to report back next month beyond that. I just, uh, I, I feel comfortable right now. We're doing a real good job with what we're doing. And I, I, what I don't want to do is jeopardize that.
No, I understand. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, it's a conversation that we can have, you know, and at even, you know, maybe not the next meeting, but the meeting after that and just reevaluate. Cause I think.
Yeah. I'll give you the status. I, I guess I, is, I want to, I want to stand stronger where we are. I don't, we don't want anything to happen. Uh, one of my concerns right now is the, is the sports programs, I guess. And right now we're the only ice. And there's a chance we might be the only ice. So, um, I'm just trying to, to keep, keep.
No, it's just, and it's also a good revenue line for just the arena to get something rolling in.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other new business?
Yeah, if I could just update the council on, uh, so tonight I spoke to the, uh, the county legislative, uh, committee on the sales tax distribution formula. Uh, I felt like it went, uh, it went good. Uh, I, I don't say that I ran out of there thinking that the money is in the bank. Uh, but I also didn't go out thinking that, uh, that our proposal is, is dead either. So, um, I think this was the first time that a, a larger than the two or three legislators we've been meeting with uh, during the negotiations got to hear from us, uh, answered quite a few questions. So, um, I, I think their minds are, are definitely open. Uh, there is some, certainly some reluctance. Uh, um, I think this has kind of been the, you know, the typical tale of two sides. Uh, you know, the county feels like, uh, we've been getting a, a larger share and kind of what have we done with it? Uh, we feel like, uh, we, we have a lot of services, uh, and commitments to provide that are, that are different than the towns or villages. So there's a reason we're getting a greater share of it. We also generate quite a bit of sales tax right, right here from the city. So I think that we've, we've properly aired that. Um, you know, I, I do think, um, there is certainly some, some election politics playing into, into this now. There's a few seats open and I think, uh, some people are looking at it. I was glad to hear the supervisor from Waddington. We've, we've had others. We had a call today from somebody unsolicited to come and, and give, uh, give a presentation. So I think the support is there. Uh, I, I do, I'll be interested to hear what happened at the end of the finance committee meeting. Legislative Forsyth and Reagan were both, were both pushing for, for something. Uh, by largely asked for at the end of the day was don't, don't turn your back on us. Don't close the book on Augsburg and negotiate with us. Uh, they, they came to us with what would have been an eleven million dollar hit to sales tax distribution over ten years, one point one million dollars for a year. All of you know what one point one looks like. You can go right down our budget and see what one point one million reduction would do to, do to us. Uh, so, uh, I, I largely made that appeal. You know, please understand what that kind of cut, uh, would, would do to us if you, uh, if you, if you move through with that. So, um, I don't know. I think, uh, we'll see what came out tonight. Um, perhaps it is best just to let the election cycle go through, see what the makeup of, of the board, uh, is. I, I know that, uh, the two legislators, uh, from our districts are, are working hard, uh, also to, to bring some compromise. Um, I made it clear tonight to the board members that asked me, there really has been no negotiation. This is, this is, uh, the sessions that I've been to have been largely lectures where, uh, where the mayor and I have gotten lectured to about the, the world according to, to the county and how they see things, uh, to believe we try to articulate our case and why, uh, why this formula has been the way it has been for so long. I also let them know we've, you know, we are doing our due diligence on preempting. Uh, you know, we, there was a point not so long ago, Augsburg collected its own sales tax. So it's not like we haven't been there before. Um, it is a pretty significant amount of work. It's not something I think we would necessarily look forward to, but I don't think that, uh, that it would be necessarily a, a negative for us. In fact, it, it certainly could be a positive. One of the difficulties we've had is determining with some level of granularity how much sales tax money is, uh, originates right, right here in Augsburg. The data is not there. I think I told all of you, we got a list of twenty-one thousand businesses in St. Lawrence County. That was the best we could do. And then trying to, to pull out the ones that have addresses here or have addresses to somebody else, but the, the business originates here, et cetera. So, uh, I, I think we're making some headway. Uh, but if, if all of you have opportunity to talk to, in particular, our two, uh, legislators that are pushing for us and anybody else, I think, uh, I think now is the time. Uh, it felt like tonight there was a sense of, why don't we just leave things the way they are for three, four, or five years? Just leave it alone. It was working just fine. Why do we have to go fooling with it? Um, it's probably a, a great question, but it's a question we, we didn't start. Uh, this was definitely thrust upon you all with little notice. And, um, and so I think, uh, you know, here, here we are. But I'm, so it's, it's productive. So.
Thank you, Steve, and thanks for, for going over there and, and the other committees. Yeah, yes, Steve.
Um, I would highly suggest that, uh, um, everybody get on YouTube when you leave wherever and just watch the meeting and, and just listen to who's on which side. And, uh, you'll see what the actual fight and the battles back and, and see how hard the ones that are fighting for us. And, uh, and especially Mr. Jelly as far as tonight. It was nice, it was nice to watch and it, it, it's, it's very informative. So really truly suggesting not just the council, but the people that are listening tonight, get out of, look at it.
Steve, is that the, uh, the finance committee meeting or the?
Yes.
The whole county legislative meeting?
I, I believe it was the whole board.
Okay. What was that? The last, the last meeting? Is that what he's referring to?
Five thirty tonight. It was, uh, it was live on YouTube at five thirty.
Uh, is it, is, does it pretty much tell us what, what legislators are for us and what, who's are against us?
Well, you'll, you'll hear some. I mean, not everybody chimed in, but, um, there's, it's informative. You, you gotta just sit back and listen to it. Our case was put out there pretty well. And, uh, and the ones that are really fighting, um, well, like I say, just sit there and listen to it and, and watch it. And you'll, you'll have your own answer.
Yeah, this, this is very big for the city, you know. It's, uh, you know, uh, they're looking to take, they're now at, uh, one hundred eighty thousand dollars a year for ten years. That's what they want of our sales tax money in this agreement. Um, our proposal to them, um, is more money for the towns and villages, actually a larger portion for them than Augsburg. But Augsburg under our proposal would get three hundred and forty thousand dollars more a year over the next ten years. We've offered compromises of, you know, we could do, uh, three years, uh, with our proposal. And if the counties, if it's a really big effect on them financially, well, we'll, then we'll, it's just three years and we'll go back to what we were. But, um, that three years would really help the towns, villages and city, uh, through this time with COVID and everything else we're facing. But also, um, the county has a very substantial fund balance and they have, um, millions of dollars in surplus every year right now. And all I've talked about is let's take some of that extra that you have, that surplus, uh, redistribute it, uh, share it with towns, villages and the city. Um, and like I say, just for three years, uh, allow it to, to lift all of us the way it has the, the county. Cause when they got that eighth penny of sales tax, uh, before that, they were, they were in real financial distress. And a lot of communities are. And I think it could do, that penny could do for, uh, the rest of us, uh, what it did for them. And even if it's a short term. But, and thank you, Steve, for going over there. That extra commitment is nice. Anyone else?
Um, yeah. Are we on new business or are we on items for discussion?
New business.
Oh, this, this can wait for items for discussion.
Okay. Well, now we'll go to items for discussion. Does anyone have items for discussion?
I was just wondering, do we have a tentative budget schedule? I'm just looking at planning for the month. I just, I know we, usually it was like three nights a week. And I just was wondering if we could get a schedule maybe in the next couple of days. So at least, cause I personally have, it's a lot of planning for me to get out of the house in the evening. So, um, the sooner I can have that, the more available I can make myself.
Yep. Uh, so around items for discussion, that was my item for discussion is what, what, what is the, what is the drumbeat for all of you? What is your availability? What days are?
Mondays.
What days are excluded?
Right. Mondays are usually best for me. Uh, I think for everybody, because we're so used to planning on this meeting. Sometimes we have short ones after the meeting and then the longer ones, police and fire and things like that on, uh, a Monday by itself, you know?
Yeah. And what's, uh, what, what time of day is kind of the earliest you want to engage?
Six would be great. Any night of the week's good for me. Weekend.
Mondays and Fridays are usually best for me. Monday mornings typically, but I, I can make it work. And I can do my best to make it work for Monday afternoons. Fridays are good. And of course I'll make myself available on the weekend.
Okay. So, um, the charter calls for November first, honor about, it happens to be a Sunday. So, um.
I'm always looking for good Sunday reading material.
Well, what I was going to say is it doesn't matter to me. We can, we can aim for something this Friday. Uh, or we can, uh, aim for Monday, the second if, if everyone won't be, won't be too off-kilter. If we, the first is not a workday. But I just want to, I don't want to be in violation of the charter anymore than I have to be.
I vote for Friday just so there's no, no improprieties seen.
Okay. It's, and what we can do even Friday is, uh, we can, you know, I've got a macro initial view, uh, plan, uh, some charts and graphs and things like, to just get us started. And then from there, maybe we could go through and, uh, just kind of print out what our schedule, you know, we'd like it to be. I, I think it's going to be a taller to meet just once a week. Uh, I mean.
No, we, I think, um, the last, um, several years, we've done like three nights a week. But we would like break them up into smaller sessions. We weren't, like we would, several would, we would do several smaller ones in one evening to go through it. So on Friday, can, we can, can we pick up our binders on Friday?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I mean, whatever you want to do, I'm, I'm, if we, if you just, I'll deliver the information. So you, you have that, that macro view. If that will satisfy everybody, then we'll plan for our first meeting for Monday, the second.
Okay. So.
Yeah.
But we have, you've got the weekend to read it.
Biders on Monday or we can pick them up on Fri- I'm just trying to plan.
No, we can do it Friday. Well, you have it for the weekend to read and then.
That's what, yeah, that's what I was saying. I would like to have it before I can really look at it.
Yeah.
Before our first. So.
Great.
Anytime Friday, you'll send, or just send out an email and then we can just swing in and grab them.
Yeah. I'll let you know by Thursday when we can pick them up.
Perfect. Thank you.
My work. And so everybody be good for a, uh, we'll call for a special meeting Monday, the second at six o'clock.
Yeah.
Okay. Bill, was that good with you too? Okay.
So you said six P M?
Uh, whatever time's best for you. I'll have six P M.
Six is fine.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
And are you, so can we just confirm who is on the audit committee?
I don't know.
Cause I know I am, but I don't know. There's supposed to be, are you on the audit committee, Mike? There should be three of us.
I thought I was removed.
You got kicked off the audit committee?
I believe so.
But there should be three of us. So I just want to make sure that we, Kathy is, do you have that?
I don't have it right in front of me, but I happen to go get it. But my best recollection is Counselor Kennedy, Counselor Pow- But my best recollection is Counselor Kennedy, Counselor Powers, and Counselor Reach.
Happy to stay with you.
That's off memory, but I can verify that if you'd like to excuse me for a moment.
If we're going to have an Audit Committee meeting, we at least have the full committee. And that way, I know you said after 6 o'clock works for you, John. So I mean, I know usually we do it in the evening because they have to work their workday. So just so we could.
Yeah, and the good news is once I've got all the information, I'll circulate it right away to the Audit Committee so you can read and be prepared. That way our meeting can be right on, on topics or issues. And they want to come and do a brief to the.
Yeah, because normally what we did last year was we met with him prior to our first November meeting. We just came an hour early, met over in the conference room, got like the, more in depth. And then he did the presentation here and that worked out well.
Yep.
Is the, is the meeting on the ready waterfront Thursday open to the public? And is that going to be advertised in some way or form? Even if you did it.
Yeah, yes, it'll be open. Anybody who wants to come, we're going to announce it, we're going to announce it as a, as a public meeting because I was anticipating at least four of you, you being here now that it's at 5 o'clock.
And that's at the Dubisky Center?
Correct.
Yeah, even if you did like a, you know, a press release, if, if they don't pick up on it, you know, just so people are aware of it?
Yeah.
Doesn't cost anything?
Okay, we done with discussion? This brings us to citizen participation. At this time, if anyone attending in person would like to, please come down, you have two minutes. Anyone remotely, Kathy?
I do not see any hands raised.
Can I speak again quickly?
Oh, sure.
Don't be that guy, but.
No.
You're not the first one to come to the podium multiple times.
First of all, I want to commend you all for a very quick board meeting. I'm going to take the video of this and send it out to my board and show them how a fast board meeting goes.
This is the first time it's ever happened.
Who's quick?
Keep moving items because my team's playing football tonight.
Just a few things, and this is an outsider's perspective. Take it as you will. The fishing tournament stuff, obviously we've been doing the Bass Masters in Waddington since 2013. If you ever need anything, please reach out. I think it was great. James Reagan, your legislator, actually brought up in the county budget meeting a week ago about actually putting a budget line in the county budget for tournaments like this. It was kind of shoved off. I don't know if they ever came back to it or circled back to it, but I think it's something that should be in there because, you know, since 2013, we've gotten county funds in order to hold that based on another funny thing we've been talking about, sales tax. You know, it was projected in 2013, we brought almost $2 million in sales tax just from that one tournament. So it's just another way to, to bring, you know, money to the county. So let's get a budget line for it. The new normal with COVID, like Councilwoman Kennedy was talking about, in Waddington, everybody wants to use the public spaces because it's so big. It's like the biggest inside spaces with everything happening with the, the winter time coming. You know, what we're doing is we're doing contracts, you know, that take liability off the town, different things like that in order to ensure that people are safely socially distancing but have a place indoors and safe to hold events. And then as far as the sales tax call, just reiterate, let's band together. You know, if you need a big showing of town supervisors and mayors, we'll show up. We'll be present with masks on, socially distant to, to negotiate with the county. I won't say fight because it's a negotiation, so. And that's it. That's all I had.
I like it. I like that idea.
Thanks, Alex.
Thank you.
Okay, we do not need, we have no need for a section of session tonight. I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned.
Remember your names.
Pardon? Oh, God, do I have to? The Bears. We don't get to watch them a whole lot around with these birds, you know?
Hey, listen.
Oh, yeah, we're in the same boat on that one.
You're very welcome.
Bears can have their hands full tonight, though.
No.
Yep.
Amy, is Casey still a Bears fan?
She is, yeah. I got, she has said she's a Bears fan.
I was just saying, I think I've got three, three Bears fans in Augsburg.
And the number one quarterback, three.
My aunt Casey had a Bears starter jacket all, all elementary school. We didn't even know who the Bears quarterback was.
85 Bears.